...one things and what is important to him or her.
Und dieser persönliche Kontakt ist, so denke ich, heute wichtiger denn je.
And this personal contact, I think, is more important than ever today.
Diese Kontakte beziehen sich zum unter anderem auf dem Bereich der Kultur, des Sports und der Jugend.
The contacts that we have are in the area of culture, sports and youth.
So gab es schon ein Fußballspiel unseres Bundesliga-Clubs VfB Stuttgart hier in St. Louis.
We already had a soccer match of our first league soccer club, VfB Stuttgart.
Und gestern haben wir den Fußballclub hier in St. Louis besucht und hoffen, dass hier neue Verbindungen entstehen.
Just yesterday, we visited the soccer club here in St. Louis and we hope that there will be new connections.
Was wir auch seit vielen Jahren machen, sind Austausche von Schulen, dass junge Menschen in der Schule sich gegenseitig besuchen und eine Zeit in der Stadt der anderen Seite verbringen.
Since many years, we've also done school exchanges. This means that young people go visit the other city and stay with families in their homes.
Globalisierung ist mehr als ein Schlagwort. Globalisierung muss erfahren werden. Das geht nur in der gegenseitigen Begegnung.
Globalization is not just a keyword. It is something that has to be experienced and this is only possible through personal contacts.
Auch sind wir sicher, dass wir viel voneinander lernen können.
And we are sure that we can learn a lot from each other.
Deshalb sind wir morgen bei der Feuerwehr hier in St. Louis. Die Feuerwehr ist auch mit vertreten. Und wir wollen sehen, wie hier bei Krisenfällen und bei Bränden gearbeitet wird.
Tomorrow, we will visit the fire department of St. Louis, together with the responsible person for the fire department in Stuttgart. And we will get to know how the fire department works and how it responds to crisis events.
Und ich bin mir sicher, dass wir mit vielen neuen Erkenntnissen wieder nach Hause fahren werden.
I'm sure that we will bring back a lot of experience and new knowledge back to Germany.
Umgekehrt sind wir natürlich auch dankbar und erfreut, wenn Besuch aus St. Louis nach Stuttgart kommt. Und sehr gerne zeigen wir dort, wie wir arbeiten.
On the other hand, we're also pleased and look forward to visitors coming to Stuttgart. And we would be happy to show them how we work in Stuttgart.
Wir sind sehr dankbar, dass hier in St. Louis mit dem World Trade Center und dem Partnerschaftsverein bürgerschaftliche Initiativen da sind, die diese Städtepartnerschaft voranbringen.
We are very thankful that here in St. Louis, there is the World Trade Center and the Sister Cities Association that helps to bring about those contacts and supports Sister City work.
Bei uns in Stuttgart hat dieses Thema ein so hohes Gewicht, dass es direkt bei unserem Oberbürgermeister angesiedelt ist.
With us in Stuttgart, this topic is so important that even the mayor himself is responsible for that.
Es hilft es, dass der Kontakt auch unabhängig von einzelnen Personen konstant weiter betrieben und gefördert werden kann.
This helps that contact can be established and remained independent from individual persons.
Und wir wären sehr froh und dankbar, wenn auch die Beziehungen hierher ins Rathaus in St. Louis noch enger würden.
And we would be very glad if the relationship with the city hall of St. Louis could also become closer.
Und so möchte ich Sie an dieser Stelle auch ganz herzlich einladen, zu uns nach Stuttgart zu kommen und die Stadt kennen zu lernen.
So I'd like to invite you to come to Stuttgart and get to know our city as well.
Wir werden Ihnen zeigen, wie wir leben, wie wir arbeiten und wie wir feiern.
We will show you how we live, how we work, and also how we party.
Und so bedanke ich mich für die Zeit, die wir hier bekommen haben. Wünsche Ihnen noch gute Beratung und ich freue mich auf ein Wiedersehen.
I want to thank you for the time that you give to us. I wish you all the best for your meeting and I'm looking forward to seeing you again.
Thank you very much.
We will dispense with the regular order business at the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Alderman from the fifth, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolutions 156 and 158.
Yes, Madam President, I would make such a motion to suspend the rules to introduce Resolutions 156 and 158.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fifth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the tenth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 156 and 157. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
156 and 158?
156 and 158, yes. Sorry, I might have said 157.
Alderman Schweitzer? Alderwoman Schweitzer? Alderman Odenberg? Alderman Kohn? Alderman Orion? Alderman Devote? Alderwoman Velazquez? Alderwoman Sanier? Alderwoman Cox Antwi? Alderman Browning? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tias? Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldrick?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Schweitzer? Alderwoman Velazquez? Alderwoman Sanier? Alderwoman Tias? We have ten aye votes and one no.
I think for some reason, we cannot hear the Alderwoman from the seventh. I think Alderwoman from the seventh, you need to figure out your volume. We still can't hear you. But regardless, by your vote, you sustain the motion. If you could please place Resolutions 156 and 158 at the end of the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Noted.
And with that, I would like to invite the Alderwoman from the eleventh to approach the dais for the presentation of Resolution 155 to recognize the St. Louis-Stuttgart Sister Cities Partnership.
Good morning and thank you, Madam President and members of the board. What a joyous occasion it is to have such esteemed visitors from halfway across the world, maybe more. And so I would ask that the clerk would read the Resolution 155.
Resolution number 155 honoring the 65th anniversary of the St. Louis-Stuttgart Sister Cities Partnership. Whereas this enduring partnership recognized as the oldest sister city organization in St. Louis and one of the first German-American partnerships post-World War II, as demonstrably boosted the culture and business of both cities through vital exchanges. And whereas the relationship between the two cities began taking shape earlier, steaming from the Institute for Aslind-Besen-Hogan IFA Initiative to connect West German and North American cities, recognizing that St. Louis and Stuttgart shared notable similarities in size, diverse industrial interests and strong educational systems. And whereas the official partnership solidified through the efforts of committed citizens in both locations, including the founding of the organizing committee in St. Louis, known as the Thousand Citizens, and the formal establishment of the partnership association in Stuttgart on March 11, 1960. And whereas for 65 years, St. Louis-Stuttgart Sister Cities has been a crucial part of the city of St. Louis community, providing essential public support for cultural business and student exchanges. And whereas, at a time when global cooperation is more important than ever, the principles of citizen diplomacy, uniting communities to address humanities pressing challenges, remain critical drivers of cooperation and understanding and progress. And whereas the two cities share remarkable parallels, including iconic architectural landmarks such as the Gateway Arch in St. Louis and the Television Tower in Stuttgart, both of which set worth and national records and served as models for subsequent structures around the globe. And whereas St. Louis-Stuttgart possess shared cultural assets, specifically vent to culture and the mutual veneration of the German poet Frederick Schiller, in whose honor a statue stands in both cities. And whereas the economic and cultural landscapes of both cities exhibit great similarity, historically rooted in the automotive industry and bear-broing traditions, while also being recognized as mother cities of hip-hop and modern strongholds for startup companies due to their proximity to universities and active research environments. And whereas the impressive longevity of the relationship between St. Louis and Stuttgart is a powerful testament to its steadfast commitment, visionary leadership, and the enduring support of its members and broader community. And whereas Susan Evans, in her dedicated leadership as president of St. Louis-Stuttgart Sister Cities, has significantly fostered these fundamental ties for many years, serving as an invaluable conduit between the cultures and communities of both St. Louis and Stuttgart. And whereas 2025 marks a year of transition and celebration for the organization, as Susan Evans, an native of the state of Baton-Worthingburg, steps down after over 20 years of leading the organization's work and commitment to the St. Louis-Stuttgart Sister City friendship. And now gracefully transitions this leadership role to Robert "Bob" Case. And whereas the city of St. Louis profoundly proud to acknowledge St. Louis-Stuttgart Sister Cities for its past achievements and its continued positive influence as it marks this momentous 65th anniversary. And whereas the 65th Anniversary Gala celebrating this transatlantic alliance will be held on Friday, November 14, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 11:30 PM at the Hilton St. Louis Frontenac. And whereas the gala will feature distinguished guests, including Stuttgart's Deputy Mayor of Security, Order and Sport, Dr. Clemens Mayer, and will include an authentic German dinner entertainment by Circus Harmony, performances by the Limburg High School Strolling Strings, and a celebration marking the kickoff of the German carnival season. And now therefore be resolved by the Honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to officially recognize and celebrate the 65th anniversary of the St. Louis-Stuttgart Sister Cities Partnership. Extend our deepest gratitude to all members for their dedication and look forward to many more years of fruitful collaboration and friendship between the cities of St. Louis, Missouri and Stuttgart, Germany. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that may be presented at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this 14th day of November 2025 by the Honorable Daniela Velazquez, Alderman Sixth Ward, the Honorable Anne Schweitzer, Alderman of the First Ward, Honorable Shamin Clark Hubbard, Alderman of the Sixth Ward, the Honorable Laura Keys, Alderman of the Eleventh Ward, adopted the 14th day of November 2025.
In thinking about your visit today, I thought about, oh God, what can I wear? So I looked up the flag of Stuttgart. So I am wearing the colors, which is gold or yellow, black and red. I would have worn my dirndl, but I'm saving it for another occasion. This is a great reminder that we are more alike than we are different. And I'm so happy to have a connection to Stuttgart through my daughter-in-love, Anna Nicola Martin Keys, who lives in Oberkhan with my son. And so I'm so happy to have that culture, to be a part of my family. And she's an excellent cook. So every time she comes to visit, it's like, will you make relaten? That's one of my favorite dishes from there. So again, I'm so happy to have you here. Congratulations on your 65th anniversary. It is so thoughtful that our Alderwoman Daniela Velazquez had the insight and forethought to think about our sister cities from around the world. And she's actually in Germany right now. And that we're all getting a lesson from that visit. Just having you here, sharing your culture with us is just so phenomenal, and I thank you. So on behalf of the Board of Aldermen, and this is embanked, that means all of the Aldermen here in the City of St. Louis say the same, that we are congratulating you on your 65th anniversary of St. Louis and Stuttgart being in a sister city partnership. Congratulations.
Any further discussion, Alderman from the third?
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this resolution. I want to thank the delegation from Stuttgart for being here. Welkommen to St. Louis and Dankeschön. And I would like to make a motion that we embank this resolution.
It's already embanked?
I don't believe it was based off of the... I think the...
I think what was read versus what is on the resolution is different. But we can go ahead and make the motion.
I was told that it was pre-printed as embanked in anticipation of us making the motion. So I'm going to make the motion that we pass this resolution and bank.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the third, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we embank Resolution number 155. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Well, I just want to say that, you know, thank you so much for visiting us. And I hope that we can go and visit you sometime in the not-too-distant future. I mean, we all become better, stronger cities by learning from each other, being connected to each other. And it's just, it's so exciting that we get to have these types of partnerships and collaborations across the world. So, yes, and we now have a direct flight to Germany from St. Louis, so we have no excuse. We have no excuse. So with that, I would like to ask if all of us could gather on the steps here to get a picture together with our full body of Aldermen.
Everyone look at the cameras.
The pros?
Pros. Alright.
Thank you so much that we got such an official call. The meeting, it's wonderful, yeah. We would be so happy if we could get closer together in the future.
Would love that, would absolutely love that, and I hope to come visit you as well.
Yeah, dude, yeah, we would be glad.
I have a good friend who lives in Frankfurt.
Really? A direct flight to Frankfurt?
Yes, exactly.
And it's not so far to Stuttgart?
Exactly.
It's my present for you, with the best wishes from Stuttgart.
Thank you very much. Yes, let's...
Thank you so much, all the best to you.
Definitely. Safe travels.
At this time, I would now like to invite the Aldermen from the fifth and the Aldermen from the ninth to the dais with your honored guests.
Thank you. If I could ask the clerk to please read Resolution number 158?
Resolution number 158 honoring Caitlin Smith. Whereas Caitlin Smith has served as the Legislative Assistant for the Ninth Ward of the City of St. Louis since August of 2023. And whereas Caitlin Smith graduated summa cum laude from the St. Louis University in 2024 with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science and Concentrations in Environmental Science, Public Policy, Social Justice, Theater and DANS. And whereas Caitlin grew up in the St. Louis region, hailing from North St. Louis County, graduating from Rosada-Kane High School in Central West End, and landed her first job with the St. Louis City Government. And whereas Caitlin was part of the original class of Legislative Assistants for the Board of Aldermen, becoming a beloved coworker and friend to many in City Hall and beyond. And whereas Caitlin Smith is personable, selfless and thoughtful, including creating a monthly craft night that helps city workers get to know each other. And whereas Caitlin embodies the spirit of public service, often taking initiative to research and write bills that improve city services, poring over budget books to find funds that help city departments and doing everything asked of her with enthusiasm and excellence. And whereas Caitlin has been an integral part of major legislation, including the effort to create St. Louis City's first Department of Transportation, which included passing a change to the charter, winning approval with 88.51% of the vote in the November 2024 citywide election. And whereas Caitlin Smith has proven herself to be a skilled policy wonk, displaying remarkable intelligence through comprehensive research and leaving her mark on our city through impactful board bills, policy briefs and presentations. And whereas through the Ninth Ward and all of the St. Louis city residents are grateful for the care and diligence that Caitlin Smith has demonstrated and are looking forward to seeing what she accomplishes next. Now therefore be resolved by the Honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to honor Caitlin Smith for her contributions to our board and city. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy such that it may be presented at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this 14th day of November 2025 by the Honorable Michael Browning, Alderman Ninth Ward.
Thank you. So Caitlin, it has been wonderful to get to know you over the last two years. When I brought you on as my Legislative Assistant, I did not know how incredibly productive we would be. I only knew that you were incredibly bright, empathetic, resourceful, thoughtful. You have proven to be that and so much more. And I am proud to see you embody the true role of a public servant. I can't wait to see what you do next. Thank you for everything, even though you're not going to be far away. I know you're going to be missed.
Need further discussion, Alderwoman from the eleventh?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. So when I think of Caitlin, I think bubbly. Because she does, she's got a bubbly quality. And I really like the times that we have spent together talking about policy. And your grasp of policy is phenomenal. So I know that great things are on the horizon for you. And I'm so happy that you won't be so far away. Thank you for serving us.
Alderwoman from the tenth?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Caitlin, I'm so immensely happy for you. I feel like you are walking in every order step that you're supposed to. Your passion and your commitment to St. Louis and the way you share that through the service is very inspiring. It's inspiring to me. So just know wherever direction you go, wherever you go. Please, if there's anything I can do, don't hesitate to call. With that, Madam President, I'd like to ask that we move this resolution in bank.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we make Resolution 158 in bank. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the eighth?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo everything that everyone already said about you, Caitlin. You're such a shining star. Your mind and your presence is so valuable to the city. So while we're sad that you're leaving us, we're happy that you're staying close to us and continuing to serve, as we all know you were destined to. And we're just so grateful to have had this time with you.
Any further discussion? Further discussion, Alderman from the third?
Testa, there we go. Thank you, Madam President. Caitlin, I think you know I have a tremendous amount of respect for you and the work that you've done here at the Board of Aldermen. I appreciate, you know, all of your energy and passion that you put into the work that you do for our city. I know many of us at the board are going to miss you, but I don't think any more than your office mate, Christian Bishop, the Legislative Assistant from the First Ward, who gets to work side by side with you all the time. And I told him that I was going to maybe embarrass him a little bit by mentioning him, since he can't actually be at the mic himself. But, you know, you are moving on to the mayor's office, so you're just right beyond the wall in the LA cave. So if you need any assistance or help, just tap in Morse code and, you know, we'll hear you. But, you know, good luck. And I am sure they're going to appreciate all of the intellect that you bring to your new role and the energy as well. So congratulations on your new role and we'll stay in touch, I'm sure.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm not going to say goodbye because you're literally going like 50 feet away. So we know that we will continue to see you on a regular basis. But I have to just say, you know, you are such a hard worker. We really appreciate all of the work you have put into the Board of Aldermen. And we're also really proud, you know. I love that we can kind of incubate young talent here at the board and then, you know, help see you off to bigger and better things, even though I feel like we're always losing our talent because our talent has such an ability to go on and do such great things. So congratulations in your next step. You'll be missed, but we all know where to find you. Alderwoman from the eleventh, are you next one? Okay, I will turn it over to Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record Resolution 156?
Resolution number 156 honoring Thora Pearson. Whereas Thora Pearson has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to public service, political engagement and legislative work throughout her professional career and academic tenure. Whereas Ms. Pearson formerly served as a field researcher for American Bridge, a Democratic Political Action Committee, where she conducted in-depth opposition research and candidates. Whereas in that role, Ms. Pearson was responsible for researching candidates, tracking policy initiatives, attending campaign events and developing broader narratives by writing detailed memoranda on campaign rhetoric rhetoric while gaining a strong understanding of federal and state legislative processes. Whereas Ms. Pearson further developed her policy expertise as a policy research and communications assistant at seeding success, where she researched educational policy initiatives, including career and technical education programs, community schooling, and child literacy, and contributed significantly to a comprehensive policy proposal, the Moore for Memphis Plan. Whereas Ms. Pearson has direct legislative appearance, experience, most recently serving as the Fifth Ward Legislative Assistant, where she was instrumental in drafting key legislation, including Board Bill 33, which clarified the duties of the City of St. Louis Sheriff, and Board Bill 62, regulating the use of golf carts on public streets and right-of-ways in St. Louis. Whereas, in her role as Legislative Assistant, Ms. Pearson served as Alderman Matthew Devote's right-hand, fielding constituent service requests, educating the public about how to effectively work with various city departments, divisions, and agencies, while developing the effective means and methods to effectively resolve longstanding constituents' needs. Ms. Pearson established a system for tracking constituent requests, city responses to those requests, and multiple platforms to facilitate communication between the Aldermen and the Ward. What the City of St. Louis follows: Her experience serving Congressman Steve Cohen of Tennessee, Ninth Congressional District, for whom she drafted communications materials and managed constituent inquiries, and doing which her dedication to community service was evident through her work at the Rhodes College Bonner Center and Memphis Animal Services. Whereas Ms. Pearson is an alumni of Rhodes College and achieved recognition as a First Team All-Conference Track and Field Athlete. Whereas Ms. Pearson's passion for politics and justice is deeply rooted, inspired by events preceding the passing of her late mother, and she continues to honor that legacy through her dedicated work for citizens ranging from Memphis, Tennessee, to St. Louis, Missouri, to Washington, DC. Now therefore being resolved by the Honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, that we pause in our deliberations to recognize and celebrate Thora Pearson, we further direct the Clerk of this Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that we may be presented at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this 14th day of November 2025 by the Honorable Matthew Devote, Alderman Fifth Ward.
Thora, you know that from day one, I've always viewed this position as a, as a team sport. This is not a job that I could do alone. I realize that I have certain deficiencies. I lack certain skills. Thora was the perfect, perfect teammate for me. She is organized, she is dedicated, she is patient, and she lets, lets things very easily go off her back. All things that in the last eight months I have watched and, and observed with awe, and I have a lot of learning to do. I knew right off the bat that I was lucky, that I was fortunate. After this tornado on May 16, I had a couple of ideas, whether it was provision of legal services, or helping those in aid, or helping our Second District Officers. They were ideas. Thora put them into place. She was the organizer. She was the, the, the person on the ground that did the legwork without any need of recognition. But beyond that, she's helped me with constituents. We came into office with a list a mile long, a mile long, and she organized, and she reached out, and she listened to folks, and she did wonderfully. And then beyond that, she's my right-hand with respect to research. There isn't a time that I have appeared here where she didn't have information for me, research for me, work-prepared notes for me to digest. And frankly, I don't know how I'm going to do it over the next handful of weeks. I do know this, is I've been working around neighborhood meetings the last two weeks, and word has gotten out that Thora's taking a promotion to Congress, to DC. What I do realize is she is more popular than... So, I have one request. When you eventually come back to St. Louis, and I do, I do hope you come back to the City of St. Louis, please do not move into the Fifth Ward.
Alderwoman from the Eleven?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. So Thora, you just have always had such a light that has surrounded you from the first day we met, and, and I just love the name Thora. Rhymes with Laura. But I truly love the uniqueness of your name and the strength. You know, you think of Thor, he's a strong dude. So one of these days, when I finally get a vacation that I haven't had since I started this job, I'm gonna come to Silver Springs to visit family, but also to see you. It's gonna happen. We're speaking it into existence today. Thank you so much for all of you that you gave to us during your time here. We will miss you.
Alderwoman from the Tenth?
And members of the Board, thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Thora, you know, me and you had our talks. I was equally as impressed with you as I talked about with our, I just can't believe both of y'all leaving at the same time. But I just want to make sure that you know as well that wherever you go, I can't come running as fast as I can to get to her, but to get to you, I would hop a flight. I'm, I'm just excited for you. We all know that these positions in so many ways become stepping stones, and you are the perfect example of this. So please, never change. And remember I talked about making sure that you always use your voice, stand on your ten toes down on what you believe in, and you're gonna go make immeasurable moves here in your future. God bless you. And with that, I would like to also ask that her resolution be moved in bank.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the Tenth, seconded by the Aldermen from the Third, that we make Resolution Number 156 in bank. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the Eighth?
Thank you, Madam President. Thora, I know our time together was short, but know that I will greatly miss you and seeing you as my hallway neighbor just across my office. Also gonna miss the fashion inspiration that you always served to us, by the way. The Alderman from the Fifth already spoke to your brilliance, so I won't further echo that. All I will say is that DC doesn't deserve you, but it really needs you. So do your thing up there, and I do hope you come back, because you are such...
Alderman from the Third?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for allowing me to bounce around to microphone to microphone this morning. I, wow, you know, it's, it's been a pure joy getting to know you, Thora, and I just can't believe that both of you are leaving at the same time, to be honest. Unfortunately, neither of you got to experience very long filibusters down here at the Board of Aldermen. I think myself, President Green, and maybe a few other members were around when we had our, probably one of the longest meetings in the history of the Board of Aldermen that lasted for about 12 hours, maybe a little longer than that, maybe 13 or 14 would have been, because it lasted till about 10:30, 11:30 at night. It was terrible. But we were doing the people's work, and part of me wants to stand here and filibuster for 11 hours, giving remarks about the two of you, just to keep you here a little bit longer with us, but I will save everyone from having to listen to my voice for that long. But, you know, I am so excited to, you know, keep up with you, hear about, you know, all of the work that you're doing in Washington, DC. I know both of the Aldermen who are, you know, losing their Legislative Assistants are going to have, you know, big shoes to fill. And, you know, certainly, since I haven't had a Legislative Assistant in the last few months, I can appreciate what they're about to endure. So, but sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, you know, congratulations on your new role, congratulations on the move to DC, and I look forward to keeping in touch with you as well.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm, I'll just echo a lot of what we heard from our colleagues. I mean, you have made quite an impact here at the Board, and, you know, I, I think I would not be remiss to call you Alderman Devote's better half. I think he would probably agree with that. And we have appreciated just the, the light and the intentionality that you have brought to the work here at the Board. And as Alderwoman from the Eighth said too, I'm also gonna miss your sense of style. I have often seen you and thought, if I could raid one person's closet, it would be yours. And so, please don't be a stranger. Please come back to St. Louis. You know, if you, if you tire of DC, because DC can be exhausting, there will always be a place here for you. We will always welcome you into city government. But I could not be more proud again to see, you know, one of our LAs kind of going on to the next level. And, and I think that, that kind of speaks to the program that we've built here. So we're happy to be a part of your journey, but don't forget us when you get to the final destination. And if everyone would like to gather on the steps for a picture? And with that, Alderwoman from the Tenth, you are recognized in the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
President, members of the Board, I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the Tenth, seconded by the Aldermen from the Third, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the Tenth?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Before I do my honored guest this, oh, well, she left, maybe. She was just upstairs. Before, oh, here she is. I had a couple of honored guests, but while she's still here, I want to make sure that we, I acknowledge rather, my constituent, Dr. Joyce Roberts, as well as my former Legislative Assistant, Ms. Cynthia Watson, and Mr. Bill Moreau, who I all have the honor of serving as their Alder Lady. Were all part of the inaugural Citizens Academy graduating class last night with Circuit Attorney Gabe Gore. It was amazing. Trial that they got to sit through. They went through six weeks of programming. Circuit Attorney Gabe Gore, thank you for this intentional effort to connect community with your office this way. And again, congratulations to my constituents on being in the inaugural class. And on my way here this morning, I got to share in a celebration, a surprise party, can you believe, for Ms. LG Day, as she turned 100 today. And so, happy birthday, Ms. LG Day. Thank you for, I started my day off right by being able to celebrate you that way. And then I have the honor of celebrating another Centurion, Ms. Queen Maisie Austin, on her 100th birthday this weekend. So this is a weekend clearly that's gonna be full of celebrations of life and love. And with that, I would like to have Ms. LG Day and Ms. Queen Maisie Austin as my honored guest. Happy birthday.
Alderwoman from the Eleven?
Thank you, Madam President. So my honored guests today are all of the recipients of last night's Staying Power Awards held at 21C Hotel and Museum. The stories that these young men and women who are recipients of the, of the award last night had truly compelling stories of, of trials, but also of triumph. And so I wish them congratulations, and we look forward to hearing more stories in the future. Thank you.
Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the Seventh?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I'm gonna echo the Alderwoman from the Tenth with an honored guest of Dr. Roberts. Dr. Roberts is one of my favorite people on planet Earth. I had the opportunity to serve on the Board of Education under her leadership, and she was phenomenal. And so I'm always going to give her her flowers and thank her for the work that she did. I know you said that you, you know, you liked being a little bit out of the spotlight today, but really grateful for your service there. And then I also wanted to echo the Alderwoman from the Eleventh with the Staying Power Awards yesterday. There were phenomenal stories. Some of that information will be made to Alders, so I think if any of us have a chance just to read and hear a little bit about the work of Mission St. Louis and some of the truly transformational stories that have come from that, we should. And then also, last night had the honor of attending the MCU Gala, and they talked a lot about justice and faith, but especially in terms of what that looks like when there needs to be a season of rebuilding and recovery post the tornado. So I definitely want to give a big shout out to their Executive Director, DeMarco Davidson, for such a phenomenal program, to Lisa Williams, who got one of, one of the awardees and does great work with Abortion Action Missouri, and just the many folks in the nation who are doing incredible work that is really, really needed in these times. Thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the Tenth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, November 7, 2025.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, November 7, 2025.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the Tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the Eighth, that we approve the minutes from Friday, November 7, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Reporter City officials?
Reporter City officials can be found in A, B, C, and D of the agenda, and has been placed in the Google Drive for your review.
Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Seeing none, first reading of board bills?
Board Bill Number 99, introduced by Alderwoman Sanier, An Ordinance Establishing a Three-Way Stop Site at the Intersection of Shenandoah Avenue and Virginia Avenue in the Tower Grove East Neighborhood in the Seventh Ward to Regulate Traffic Traveling in All Directions and Containing an Emergency Clause. Board Bill Number 100, introduced by Alderman Cox-Antui, Alderman Norrian, Mayor Spencer, and President Green, I'm sorry, and Ms. Clark Hubbard, and President Green, An Ordinance Submitting to the Qualified Voters of the City of St. Louis pursuant to Section 92.115 or ASMO, the question of whether to continue the earnings tax imposed by the City of St. Louis for a period of five years, providing for an election and the manner of voting, providing that if such question shall receive the votes of a majority of the voters voting thereon, that such earning tax shall continue and containing a servability clause and emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills?
To the Public Infrastructure Committee Board Bill Number 99, and to the Budget Committee Board Bill Number 100. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading, reporter standing committees?
The following board bills were found out of the Public Infrastructure with a due-pass recommendation. Board Bill Number 79, as amended in committee by Doc, by Mr. Devote, pursuant to the Ordinance Number 70333, as amended by Ordinance Number 71394, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on various blocks in the Fifth Ward. Board Bill Number 86, introduced by Alderwoman Cox-Antui, pursuant to Ordinance Number- pursuant to Ordinance Number 70333, as amended by Ordinance Number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on various blocks in the 8th Ward. Board Bill Number 96, introduced by Alderwoman Cox-Antui, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to establish the direction of Marine Avenue as a one-way street southbound from the 3600 block to the 3700 block. And Board Bill Number 97, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Kim Kimberly's Way pursuant to Ordinance Number 68937, which shall begin at the intersection of Deer Street and run north on Deer Street to the intersection of Martin Luther King Boulevard. That is the extent of the second reading of report of standing committee.
Report to special committees.
We have none.
Board bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill Number 55, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderman Cone, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldrick. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January 28, 2025 for the 5105 Cabine Avenue area in the City of St. Louis. Board Bill Number 58, introduced by Alderwoman Sanier, Alderman Cone, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderman Aldrick. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November 14, 2023 for the Benton Park West, Fox Park, and Tower Grove East Scattered Sites area in the City of St. Louis. That is the extent for board bills of perfection consent.
Madam Clerk, could you please add me as a co-sponsor to Board Bill 58?
Noted.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized in the motion to adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendars. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 17, report of engrossment.
Board Bill Number 84, Number 13, Number 75, 85, 93, 94, and 95. That is the extent of report of engrossment.
Third reading and final board bills consent.
Board Bill Number 84, Board Bill Number 13, Number 75, 85, 93, 94, and 95.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third, the board bills on the third reading finally passage and consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we adopt the third reading and final passage board bills on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cone. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devotee. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Cox-Antui. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldrick. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Aldrick. 10 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of board bills.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 20, reported the finally passed and signed by the President.
Board Bills Number 84, 13, 75, 85, 93, 94, and 95.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix her signature here to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions in reference to committee.
Resolution Number 150, introduced by Alderman Browning and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and Alderwoman Keys. Supporting the Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local One, Appeal for Living Wages and Benefits for Area Janitors Who Care Essential Workers.
Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on the first reading Resolution 150.
Thank you. Could we please put Resolution 150 on the informal calendar?
Noted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Second reading resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Report from the Health and Human Development Committee, Mayor's Appointment to the Mental Health Board, Mr. Brian Phillips.
Alderwoman from the 7th, you are recognized on Mayor Spencer's Appointment to the Mental Health Board.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. Brian Phillips came before the Health and Human Development Committee, as did the Power of Ten Alder Lady, and gave just a phenomenal presentation. The committee talked at nauseam about his qualifications. He was clearly extremely passionate, specifically about housing and specifically about the housing needs that folks with mental health challenges and disabilities have. His resume is very long. He had relationships with several us, and, you know, his passion was very clear. His dedication is very clear. And so I would like to make the motion that we accept the mayor's appointment of Brian Phillips to the Mental Health Board.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 7th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we approve Mayor Spencer's Appointment to the Mental Health Board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you. I would be, Madam President, what I just want to say and thank the committee yesterday for taking the time, of course, to my constituent, Mr. Brian Phillips, for taking the time. I noted that in a position and the work that he has done here in the City of St. Louis for 30-plus years, he could choose to be anywhere and do anything. But he has chosen to stay, live in the City of St. Louis, in the northwest end of the City of St. Louis, and give back in so many different ways, in addition to now serving and taking on this role of serving on the Mental Health Board, which we know plays such a pivotal role in so many of the resources and the responses that we make here down in the City of St. Louis. So again, thank you to the committee. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman Boyd, and your committee members. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And with that, I just want to echo again my support for his appointment to the Mental Health Board.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 7th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we approve Mayor Spencer's Appointment to the Mental Health Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, November the 17, 2025, we have none. Tuesday, November the 18, 25, Transportation and Commerce Committee in the Kennedy Room at 9:00 a.m. HUD's Committee, Kennedy Room at 11:00 a.m. Wednesday, November the 19, 2025, Special Committee on Reducing Red Tape in the Kennedy Room at 12:30. HUD's Committee, Kennedy Room at 6:00 p.m. Thursday, November the 20, 2025, Personnel and Administration in the Kennedy Room at 11:00 a.m. Public Safety in the Kennedy Room at 2:00 p.m. And Friday, November the 21st, Full Board Meeting in the Chambers at 10:00 a.m.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 7th.
No.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would just like to announce that during our HUD's meeting on the 18th, in addition to Board Bill 66, we will have three presentations and discussions, one being from the Energy Burden Group, the next being on our American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding and expenditures, and then the third being from the real estate tax. These will be very good, not only discussions, but ways for us to see how we can bolster the efforts and see how we can maybe redirect funding and make sure we get the most out of some of the things and some of the programs that we have going on and coming up. And then on the 19th, the discussion in the evening, the 6:00 p.m. meeting, will be the discussion with Department of Human Services and Legal Services of Eastern Missouri about Board Bill 59, the Right to Counsel, and where we are in that programming. Again, we know that when we come down here with the mission and the belief that we want what's best for our communities and stand-up programming and stand-up policy that we think is gonna feed and meet need and with resources, most importantly, we want them to work. We want them to be successful. So this is the platform, and this is our responsibility and role that we can play to get it at the forefront to see if there's some course correction or if it's doing well, that we can be in position to help. So I look forward to seeing my colleagues and hearing from my colleagues on all of these pertinent issues. And with that, again, I just wanted to announce those two meetings. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 7th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. One of the things that I'm happy to announce is that there is an incredible exhibit happening at the Missouri History Museum about Mill Creek Valley, which was once a thriving, beautiful neighborhood within St. Louis. It talks a lot about some of the things I think we need to be cautious about as we are redeveloping and building our city. That is at the Missouri History Museum. They have a ribbon cutting tomorrow, but they have activities all weekend long. So I would absolutely encourage you to tap into that effort if you haven't. And then I also want to highlight that there is a community food drive that is taking place tomorrow as well, from 11:00 a.m., from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. at 1610 Olive Street, St. Louis, Missouri. And so if you're looking to donate, if you're in need of anything, definitely want to stop by. It's a partnership between a lot of folks, but definitely want to give a shout out to Representative Marty Joe Murray, who has led the effort and brought it together. And then also, if you don't have plans tonight, there is a fundraiser that is happening at Americor St. Louis called Share the Warmth. They operate a shelter that operates during specifically cold hazard times. And so they are trying to do the fundraiser. It is a chili cook-off, so you can bring your appetite. I think tickets are $25, but you can also obviously make additional donations. And there are several organizations that has pulled that off, and I'm looking forward to being there tonight. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to make sure that we put it out there that food resources will be given away tomorrow at the Urban League at 1408 North Kings Highway from noon to 3:00 o'clock. Please spread the word. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we excuse all the persons from the 1st, 6th, and 12th wards for necessary absence.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 7th, that we excuse the older persons from the 1st, 6th, and 12th for necessary absence. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, November 21, 2025, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers at 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we adjourn until Friday, November 21, 2025, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers at 10:00 a.m. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.